We are now officially. All right. Citizens remarks, complaints, comments, anybody signed up this week there?
Danny Powell.
Hi. Couple meetings ago, you let us know that the IRS bill for the city, that we're paying $3,000 a month now in payment.
It will be soon.
Well, it'll be soon, okay. When does that start?
It's gonna start in July.
In July. And what is, what did the total end up being? We never did hear what the total was.
It was sixty, just sixty-one thousand.
It sounded like fifty-nine to sixty-something thousand. I don't have the numbers.
Without the penalties and interest and everything?
Yeah, that's what they worked out, yes.
So that's like twenty months worth. That's almost, well, that's in two years. I was just curious about that, because we never did hear what the total was, so. Like, that's it. Thanks.
No, no one else.
All right, everyone look over the minutes from the previous meeting.
I make a motion that approve the minutes from the last meeting with the correction for that bill is needed to be. At six o'clock.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion.
A second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, who took the minutes from the last meeting? Okay, correspondence. Anyone got any correspondence? Only one I got is, you got one?
State auditorium.
All right.
State auditorium has been received of the final budget revision for the current fiscal year by June fifteenth. That's where we have to. What is it, for the coal severance? That's where we have to make the correction on the coal severance and get it in by July fifteenth. So that they can have it revised by July thirty-first.
Well, what kind of mistake was made on that?
We didn't have the actual. A projected fund balance plan by first two thousand and eighteen should be revised, should be revised to actual by July fifteen. If the entity files, the fund balance was revised in error for whatever reason. The fund balance may be corrected after the date. This was for the coal severance. We needed to put the coal severance in another place, and we didn't put it there. But we have to have it corrected, because we were approved conditionally to make this correction. And that's all it was, was just the coal severance.
Anyone else got any correspondence?
Did everybody get this, or did you just put this on the table? The fundraiser?
I didn't see that.
There's a fundraiser for Dorby and Ernie Stewart on Saturday, June second. They're the families that lost their home up on Hampshire Street. It's gonna be June the second from eleven to four, or until sold out at Emmanuel Church up on Hampshire Street. Adults, three dollars, kids are five, three and under, it's free. They lost everything in a fire.
A couple. I think he's on it tomorrow. I think we put it on.
Okay. I got a, just a little card here from the concerned citizens thanking us for the donation that I made to their flower congregation. Anyone else got any correspondence? Okay. Boxers, you folks.
The pool was painted, the water is presently almost, it'll be filled by the time this meeting's over, and he has to go and shut it off. He's got the new electric in the building for the.
Chlorine pump.
The chlorine pump. I cleaned out the concession stand area. There's a lot that needs to be done, but we're hoping we got enough done that John will be happy. We'll have to call him tomorrow and get him to come up and inspect it and take a sample. If the sample's okay tomorrow, we can open Friday as planned.
And we also got a new heater in the girl's bathroom. I gotta replace the valve yet, and that'll be ready to go there.
And we were talking, we would like to get, I would like to use Parks and Rec money to get a riding lawnmower, so we can use it for both the park and the pool. It's, it's both my areas. And we got the money in the Parks and Rec board, and that would be so much easier. The lifeguards would actually cut the grass if we had a riding lawnmower. They actually stated that they would cut the grass, that would keep the town from doing it, and then the town can use it for the park. And Ernie checked the prices, he found one for eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
You have spent a thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
Put on his.
Seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
And he found one for eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
This one was a mirror we have right there.
We have, but I want one for the pool, when they're all out doing their other stuff. Betty Berzley said at one time we had one at the pool. That was for.
Well, that's probably that old one that's down there that we couldn't get the room.
Yeah, that's a, they said it's the city of taking it for something that bring it back. That one building on the right always had the lawnmower, and it's, it'd be nice just.
Probably wanna sit down there and set it scribe. Well, we, we could store it in the pool building.
Yeah.
In the winter, right?
Yeah. We could store it there when it's not being used, and when you use one, you can come over and get it. And the lifeguards will be.
These guys could use the one we have.
Yeah.
You know, it would be nicer to, if the pool people just used it.
That's what I mean, and not interrupt, yeah, and not, not say we need your lawnmower. One of those one already.
Then if someone's always blaming the other person who tore it up too.
Right.
We need to have a handle on all that.
Okay, and then weed whackers for sixty-eight dollars, I'd like to get a lawnmower and a weed whacker out of my Parks and Rec account.
Well, I guess we'll probably have to do that next meeting, don't we?
The long agenda, okay. And I was talking to Patty Coleman, she is looking for projects for the Energy Express mentors, which I asked if it could be for somebody cutting grass, weed whacking and stuff. She's checking out all the details, and she's gonna get back to me. But it's for all June and part of July, so, and they're older kids, it's the mentors, not the young kids. And if we could get them from like eight to one every day, that would, we could get them to do stuff throughout the town. If there's any special projects.
Window washings, like the businesses in the library, window washing, you know. And all the rain and the dirt and the dust, and they go looking.
But she said to take us some projects, and she'd get back with me, but she said that they want to come to Piedmont and do projects.
We could use some lines, Vicky.
Like more lines, Vicky?
Oh, yeah.
I said write down a list of projects, and she'll get back with me.
And curb, you're gonna make me do that.
And while Ernie was cleaning back in the shed back there, he found a whole complete swing set. Somebody said it had been chanced off at one time, and somebody donated it back to the town. I was wondering if I could make up some tickets, and we could chance it off for the pool or some, something in town. Sell the tickets to Home Fest and let it go off from Home Fest.
Where's the store?
It's over in the railroad building. Still in a box.
Cool.
Not even open in the box. It's a.
I think, I think Ben won it one time at.
Did you win it?
Raff, and you donated it back.
It's got a.
I won something I donated back to Adam.
It's not a commercial one, that he couldn't take that liability on. It's one that has like the glider and the little slide and the two swings and the trapeze on it.
The metal tube, the metal tube?
Yes. It's good enough to put on a fifty-fifty, somebody might want to put their own in.
Was it a fundraiser for the pool, was that what you said?
I don't, for something. I mean, it's ours, I might as well get it out there and chance it off and.
Put your money somewhere.
Yeah, put your money somewhere. Use the lawn mower, for that matter.
We could probably use a few bucks for paint, for.
Yeah, okay, yeah, just take the money out for it. And Harry Coleman called me, and he said there's a couple barrels, Ernie, throughout town that don't have flowers in them. They wanted to know if yous would take them and get rid of them for them. If you said, they said, he said one, but Miss Jenny told me two. So if you see one or two barrels that don't have any flowers in them, they're the ones that they say aren't any good, and they wanted to know if you guys could dispose of them for them.
We'll get them removed.
Ernie, that, on that, on that situation right there, the ones that has the, like, the staves on them? There's, those staves can be used, and some of them that's missing around the garden's can. So don't, just throw the staves away. Is that all you got?
Yep. Well, like I said, for the pool, I'm hoping we can open Friday and be open for Memorial Day weekend, and then we'll be open just for evening swims until the twelfth, when school's out. And then after school's out, we'll be open. I've got eleven certified lifeguards at present time.
Okay, good.
I don't have too much, just working on Home Fest and getting ready for that meeting coming up for the bad buildings.
Nothing out of that yet.
No, our meeting's June the fourteenth.
I always will have it, and Rain's kept us down pretty much with people up on the grass there, they ain't gonna do whatever Rain's been getting done, doesn't he?
He's been getting some too.
Well, I know he's been getting some, I don't know. But, no, Ernie, you got anything else you wanna add to it?
Let's see here, I'm gonna have to take our dump, silver dump truck, have it checked. It sounds like something with a brake for it. Making a, when you take it out somewhere and hit the brakes, it's a life of real loud popping, snapping sound. Need to get that looked at. Library Street is now two-way street. I had a conversation with the state road engineers. They said they have nothing to do with the streets in town, just the main state highways. We can pretty much do what we need to do with the. Do have a little work going on up here on Oak Street. The, I was just up there and looked at it. I think, oh, I forgot his name.
Doug first.
Yeah, Doug. He is putting a train piping in to try to keep that water from the road and that bank out. And as soon as we can get a chance, I wanna get in there, put a French train across, and start repairing that so we can get traffic going again. One other thing I have is a contract renewal with Hawk Corporation. This is for the meter equipment up at the water plant, the chlorine analyzer. It comes up to be renewed in July. I'd like to add the two new turf meters to that list. I found out the last time tech was sent, if we could go in there and start cleaning those turfs, make one mistake on those laser optics, that's over a thousand dollars to replace that. And under the contract, they'll come in, they'll do the cleaning and the calibration.
Free of charge?
No.
What's the name of the company?
Hawk. H-A-C-K. C-H.
C-H, I'm.
But I will call them and see what, what it is. Right now, just for the chlorine analyzers, twelve hundred and seventy dollars. And they come in twice a year on it, and calibrate it, clean it. That's all I got for now.
Okay. John? Vicky?
I have a bank account, some of the bills were paid today, so this is not an actual, but we're pretty close. The general fund, two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents. The watered account, two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and ten cents. Sewer, thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Park, seven thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. The pool, seven thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and fourteen cents. Nine four one, one thousand nine hundred and six dollars. The police account, three thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Zero, small city block grant, sewer repair, nineteen thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and seven cents. Fire department grant, five dollars forty-two cents. Committed to revive Piedmont, which is not a city account, fifty dollars. Fairs and festivals, six thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Rainy day fund, eight hundred and eleven dollars and three cents. Security deposits, four thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and one cent. Coal severage, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Housing assessment, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the total available balance, after the bills come out, seventy thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-two cents. And I also have profit and loss, if anyone needs to look at it, a lot of it. And the newsletter's done. And Paul, if it's okay with you, I would like to print them again at the library, if you don't mind. And then we'll have them here, because I know our ink cartridges here are just outrageous, really expensive. Can't talk up.
You're up, Vicky. You got anything to report?
Our report's quite small. I'm New Year's, so I'm trying to be accustomed to the area, get to know the people, know the ins and outs. Don't got much else to report besides that.
Okay. All right, TJ, it's on you.
First, I wanna thank Mr. Mayor and Paula, Acting Mayor, for everyone's support for Mr. Harvey's program that we had to unveil his sign, a little ceremony. Ernie helped me put up the sign, and, and a lot of people said how nice the ceremony was. But I was here for another project I was working on, that was for Miss Ida Ruth Price Golliver. Miss, Miss Price Golliver was a student of Howard High School, and she went on to graduate from West Virginia State University College at that time, and came back to teach at Howard High. And Miss Ida Ruth was, I didn't realize that she was, when the school closed, after its integration, she was moved, transferred to Kaiser High School and taught there, both blacks and whites, which was historic. And I worked with my, my friend Mike Garcia in Senator Manchin's office, and this is the, the proclamation that we received from Senator Manchin's office. And I also did one for the city of Piedmont to, for the mayor to sign off. And what I wanted to do was, once we get it written up, I'll take it to the superintendents of school, after you sign it, Mr. Mayor, to the principal at the high school. And I wanted to get from a student from K to twelve to sign the resolution, so she would have the.
So are you still having a copy of that, did we read it, did we read that here? Actually, you gave that to me, TJ, I re-get it as a proclamation with the whereas and everything in it. I didn't know you was already, I thought you were waiting for that.
Well, this isn't a proclamation, this is a recognition, a condemnation.
You still have it though?
This is for African-American soldiers.
No. Remember I brought, maybe I, yeah.
That's the only thing I got here.
I have a copy on my computer, I made it from the letter you gave me, and I put the whereas, as, and the.
Okay.
And I said I would use the city of Piedmont seal on it, and I put a place for the mayor and all the council to sign it.
Okay, good. Okay.
So.
Can we attach like a second sheet or something, so I can get the other people to sign off on it? The, the, the superintendents of school, Mr. Dillon, Mr. Williams. I mean, I'll just, I'll just have them, you know, they can just write on it.
Yeah, put some more lines on it.
Sure. So I'm working on trying to do the, to somehow present that, because Miss, she's, she's actually my aunt, just don't have anything to do with, I'm trying to recognize people while they're still here, don't wait till people die, and then try to recognize them. But she's in Yonkers, New York, and I've been working with my cousin, her son, to see if she can come here to do it, or if not, if we could have something like, like we have for Mr. Stewart, to recognize her publicly. Because there's still people that, that graduate from, well, not necessarily graduate, some did graduate, but, but at least some, some went to higher. So Uncle Harry and, and my uncles, and, and Missy and people like that, that actually skipped. They graduated, and some, some did graduate, graduated from Piedmont, but they went to higher. So, but if you could let me know when we get it finished and.
I hope that it's done on my computer.
Okay.
I brought it up and showed you, I thought I lost the copy during it, but.
I don't know, I was, I looked in the file. But I don't.
Can Paula read that? I think it's worth.
Recognition from Jerry Man, Manchin III, United States Senator. Gail and I are so very honored to recognize Mrs. Ida Price Golliver, a retired teacher, lifelong West Virginian, and a member of our great, greatest generation, who at the age of ninety-four continues to be an inspiration to all. It is often said that you need to be the change you wanna see in the world. That phrase is never as true and consistent as it is in a classroom where educators have a direct impact on how students use leadership, failure or success. It is true that educators are not given nearly enough credit for the vital roles they play in our lives and those of our children and grandchildren. They shape our nation's next leaders and creators, and inspire them to make our world a better place. That is Ida's legacy to our education, as an educator in West Virginia. Ida grew up on Aaron Street in beautiful Piedmont, down the street from where she found her passion for education, Howard High School. After graduating from West Virginia State College, she returned home to give back to the community she loved, teaching both home economics and physical education. When segregation finally ended, Ida went on to teach in Kaiser in New York. The legacy of Howard School remains in the hearts of everyone in the Piedmont community. Ida had the privilege of teaching some of our home state's most distinguished individuals, such as musician Don Redmond and North Eleven War hero Aubrey Stewart. Ida is a privilege to recognize, it is a privilege to recognize you, and all I can say is thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your years of service to West Virginia students. With warm regards, Jeremage.
That's pretty awesome, Chris. Sir, what I, I would also like to say is that we're proud to contribute to Kaiser High School through the Aubrey Stewart Scholarship. And we also do recognize two individuals at the middle school. So Mr. Harvey's doing great things, and to let you know that, that he is doing, investing in the lives of these young students. No greater investment than when you can invest in somebody's life.
Absolutely. Thank you, TJ. Okay, I guess since this is on the agenda, we can make a motion to sign this resolution and get it on its way, right?
I make a motion that we sign the resolution for, in honor of Ida Mae Price. Ida Ruth. I put Mae on my second. I'm gonna change her name to Ruth, I mean Mae. Ida Ruth.
Got a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, we will sign that paper as soon as Paula gets it to us.
How many lines you want for it?
Well, we do the, cause you already have your.
I have mayor and count, the council lines.
Okay, then I'll do the two superintendents of school, Mr. Lewis, principal, and then a student from K to twelve.
Two superintendents of the staff?
Mr. Dillon, Mr. Williams, both.
Okay, and the principal and a student, okay.
Student from K, from K to twelve.
Okay, there's thirteen.
Moving on to new business. The approval of a municipal judge. You know, we have Terry, who is our municipal judge and has been for years. And what we generally do with him is to pay for a one-night stay and mileage to get him back and forth to get his approvals in for, to be a municipal judge. So what, what we're asking here is to approve the municipal judge and the mileage and a one-night stay for him. It generally comes out to about three hundred dollars or something like that.
I make a motion that we pay the mileage and the one-night stay for Mr. Law to get his recertification done, to be our municipal judge.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll, we'll get his stuff underway. Next thing on the agenda is a new police officer which was appointed under an emergency situation. We hasn't, haven't really officially hired a police officer. We have had advertised, the advertisement date is not up yet. And we also have to wait, I think Friday is the deadline. We do have one applicant, so we'll see where that goes from here, and that will be on our next month's agenda. Mr. John Lachey?
Greetings. I wanna take a couple of minutes, thank you for the time we spent together in the winter, and give you a little bit of a follow-up. When we were around the county, we learned that we need to connect the county better. And so part of the Chamber of Commerce, if I can hand it to you, actively for the summer, is to do this tour of the seven seas, I was really happy to see it posted on the door when I came in. That's the schedule, along with the definition of why we're doing this. And, and tonight, I mean, those should be enough for everybody in the room. And the idea is all around the county, we wanna encourage you to go to different parks and things that are happening. For example, here, we're promoting the idea of your Home Fest, and then in Barnum, which is still this area, we've got a River Day during a release that's great for kayaking and that sort of thing. And then we're looking at having a Mineral County Car Show here in September. And it turns out that the News Tribune was not able to do theirs this year, so they're joining with us in that. And so that's Labor Day weekend, there are a lot of things happening with cars around that time. So it should be a really good occasion. And I think one of the things that's gonna happen is, we will go, Ben and I tend to like old cars, and I think we'll go to some of the cruise-ins and invite people to come to Piedmont on September the first. So if any of you wanna tag along, I think that'll be fun. But my, my request tonight is to you, to basically, in addition to say thank you for the things that you're doing to, to bring people from Ridge Lane, Elgin, and P, at Burlington here, is to think about how you can go out as well. Because what we need to do is try to find people from the area, each area that will go to the other, and begin to represent both Piedmont and also learn from these other areas what's going on. We're discovering some amazing things with respect to, let's say, resources that we're not all that aware of. Assets in the county. I was just talking today about the railroad called T M and P that was out of Burlington. And actually, you're all familiar with the Apple Harvest Festival, I think? And there was a period of time between nineteen eleven and nineteen nineteen when there was a railroad dedicated to come out of that area up to Kaiser, connect with the B and O Railroad, and ship the apples into Baltimore. And, and there's a lot of the vestige of that left. And so some of the historical society is trying to pull all that together, and it's really exciting to see. I discovered that at the Stone House, and this is one reason why to go to these different places. I was listening to them talk about this, I walked in the Stone House, here's this big map of the T M and P. Two, two mount, let's see. I always, they, they nicknamed it called Two Mules and a Pony, that's not it, Twin Mountain and Potomac Railroad. It was a narrow gauge railroad. And it's, there's an interesting American history connection, which I will not tell you, 'cause you have to go look at it. But the thing is, when you go to these different parts of the county, you find things that we didn't realize were there. And, and so some of these things, you're well aware of, some of these things are new that are coming. Here's another thing I'm gonna hand to you, Vicky. Up in Elgin, between you and Elgin is Jennings Randolph Lake, and it's a gem for Mineral County. But a lot of people need to be encouraged to go, and so Parks and Rec, we're partnering with Parks and Rec in Mineral County to do a boat race. It's called the Blue Dragon Regatta. Did you know the lake was nicknamed Blue Dragon? Anybody know why? When you look down from the map, look at, look at the brochure there. When you look down like Google Earth, you look at the lake, and it looks like a dragon. And so it's really kinda fun. So they're, they're playing with that to draw attention to it, and they've done a really nice brochure up, I think. And so, so we're encouraging people to pay attention to these things. We, we're helping with ideas about how to trigger brochures like this. And this is one way for us to get to know the county better, get to know each other in the county better, learn from one another. And so this is the thing that's, that's really gonna be helpful, and I appreciate your efforts to do. And I appreciate your efforts to do this with us. I'm suggesting on this third page that maybe four people from the county, from the city here, are dedicated to go out to these various events. There are twenty-one events through the course of the spring and fall. And so there's a lot to do. And then one of the things that's really important, we're trying to do several things that haven't been done before. I mentioned the car show. The county-wide car show is right here. But we're also looking at doing a farm show, Mineral County Farm Show at Tractor Supply. And that's in New Creek area, so that's coming up the end of July. And then we want to end it all with a harvest festival at the courthouse, sort of the center point of our county. And the key we will really make this work well is if some folks, a group of people from each of these districts, present some things from the district at that harvest festival to showcase your area. So this is the kind of thing where we need to have your involvement as well. It only works if we're all into it. And then we'll wrap it up by having a celebration on November first. Start out Thanksgiving, November, all month. And enjoy that. And then the thing that's really important, we keep talking about almost all of us in organizations, we're always looking for younger leadership. So if you could identify people like that in your area, we'll cultivate them, encourage them, bring them into the mix. Any questions? Thank you for your leadership early on in the winter to get us thinking like this.
Is this the cardboard and duct tape?
Yes.
I saw that today. That's cute.
It's a great idea.
Yes, it is.
Everybody was thinking it was like toys. It's like, you have to pilot the boat.
Oh, we're like, you have to be in the boat.
You have to be in the boat. So I was in touch with a nine-one-one center today to make sure we have EMS there.
Well, that was Kevin's idea.
Yeah, yeah. And there'll be other things going on that day that will attract kids and be a lot of spectators. There'll be food service and that sort of thing, too.
And this is the kind of thing we're asking everyone to do. Try to figure out some ideas that we can have as attractions. And, you know, we talked about our river access that we have here. And we need to. Get some of that out there. And then we have the fishing radio and all going to our Home Fest. We really need to get some of this stuff out there and make people aware that Piedmont is here and we're part of Mineral County.
Well, you and Paula actually helped with that by going to Fort Ashby days.
Yes.
So that is the kind of thing we're talking about. And it's working. Elgin had about two hundred and fifty people at their bluegrass festival last Saturday. It was raining and everything like that, and she took them into the fire hall. Wonderful. Great music, great foods. It's working.
We're gonna have to take some lessons from Elgin.
See, they have a really inspiring mayor, too, Ben.
Yeah, they have a lot of citizens up there that are starting to care more and more about the town also.
Absolutely.
And that means a lot. If you don't have the citizen's approval on all this stuff, you're nowhere. And that's basically some of the things that we need to work on here. Is that all you've got, John?
Yep, yep. I'd just say that law enforcement is cleaning up the Wild West up there, too.
Uh, yeah.
Well, Marion's got to be glad for that.
She is.
Yeah, and, you know, as we've talked about this drug test for some several places, too, it seems to be working.
It is. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, John. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is Neptune meter service. Which one of you guys is gonna do the presenting?
Actually, it'll be me. Thank you, Mr. May, Councilman, and everyone else independent. I'm Charles Dye with Corning. Don't forget what a good place to be, maybe here. Just here to talk a little bit about the Neptune, the AMR system part. And I guess make sure I'm in alignment with what your needs are. What exactly are you guys pushing for with this change-out? Are you looking for optimization in reading? Are you looking for leak detections? Are you looking for features of the system? You looking for speed, safety? What are the big drivers? Okay, good. This is a big rainbow. Which is no word. One of the very good things about Neptune, and I'll keep this brief. I don't want to keep you guys too long. One of the things about Neptune and also most other meter manufacturers at this point is, they've gotten to a point where technology has improved so greatly that you are pretty much, whatever you get, you're going to get the ability to get the features that you're looking for, whether it be the leak detection, the tamper detection, backflow detection, stuff like that. So that's one of the things that, you know, I guess from my standpoint in the industry, has been a great big push to get to. So it's not, you know, only the super-rich municipalities have the ability to get this stuff. Now it's, you know, it's where anyone can get it as long as they're willing to maybe sacrifice a little bit at the beginning for whether it be on product-wise or cost-wise or just basically what they're looking for-wise. There are opportunities to go from, you guys are a touch system right now, to a radio system that can be driven by or to a fixed base system that someone sits here and garners the readings that way without actually physically having to go out. There are positives and negatives to all of those. So I guess it's basically where you guys are at on your decision-making process, whether it be funds available or need for safety or need for speed or whatever. But I've been doing this for about eighteen years and looking at a scenario like this for a municipality this size, we're about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and forty accounts?
It's right around three hundred, Mark.
Okay, so the big part about that is we look for what a municipality is going to do gain long-term-wise. Because you're looking at cost of each unit. What we try to do is like a yearly cost for something. And with the radio units, and this is basically what it looked like, very similar to what you guys have now, with the exception of this is a radio unit that's built inside of here, okay? You still would have the connection, what looks like the touchpad out there. Obviously, all this does is bring the signal up so you can't get dirt, mud, water, anything like that to dampen your signal. And plus, it helps propagate it and send it out, you know, a mile, mile and a half compared to underneath the lid with mud or water over the top. You're lucky if you're getting out maybe, you know, one tenth of a mile. And I can pass this round, I'm sorry. And getting back to what I was saying. For municipalities this size, for your, the cost, my recommendation, and you guys can do whatever you want to because we supply all kinds of stuff. But probably the big part would be, are you guys thinking of mobile on this? Or are you thinking of targeted fixed base?
Well, we're kind of up in the air, but we, I think the fixed base is the way to go. But it all depends on cost and what we're up against as far as cost and how we can approach this. We're trying to incorporate this into Phase Three.
Okay.
At the water project. And Ernie's been trying to rimrod this in, on several different angles, on what we really need. And again, you know, what happens with Phase Three is probably another two years down the line.
Yes, sir.
And what we would like to do at the end of Phase Three is be able to actually read the meters from here or in certain places, I don't think in our elite situation, it's gonna, it's gonna be acceptable to have that kind of a system.
The hear-a-reading system or the mobile system?
Hear-a-reading system.
Okay, then, yeah, your topography is pretty wicked. It's one of the tougher ones I've seen in a while. But that being said, and I've got nothing against the fixed base side. The part that I have is I look at the lifecycle cost of the system, whether it be a touch read system, a radio or a mobile system, or a fixed base system. And with, like I've said before, the positive and negative parts. If there is a huge negative, and we do this too, so I'm putting this on us. If you're looking at a fixed base system, you're looking at your lifecycle cost. You know, it's great when you initially had that grant or that fund that does the first hit. But the biggest thing about fixed base is the continual payments of, you know, the maintenance or needing support for this stuff. Not like a local support thing from the manufacturer. And you tend to run into a little bit more of a cost outlay than you're either ready to accept or, you know, there are, and not saying that we wouldn't put it, but put out in front of you to say, hey, look, this is where the, you know, it's only going to cost you, let's say, three hundred thousand dollars to get this system in, you're great. Well, make sure you understand that after that, it's going to be another fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a year for maintenance or posting of the software or the data that's coming in. There are issues with that, too, so. But that being said, not like sitting at your desk and getting every meter reading on demand like that, so.
Well, we are looking at lifecycle management.
Okay.
As a whole. But, you know, we're thinking that our whole geology here isn't going to take, be able to have a fixed read.
Okay.
And Ernie and I have been talking about this a bit here, but the cost of replacement, the lifecycle of this piece of equipment is, I'm understanding it's ten years?
This equipment or the reading equipment?
Both of it.
Okay, lifecycle cost, I mean, lifecycle is usually on like a handheld. It's very sad to say, those things, two to five years at the max because just think of any electronic device you have. It's, by the time you get it, they've already working on something else. One of the things that we try to do with our hardware that we will sell at the end of the, or the year-end or the end-of-life date, we always try to push five years and say, we'll support that after the manufacturer says that it's done. So, and we've done real well with that. We've had, in my eighteen years, we've had seven handhelds or six handhelds that have gone through the cycle. So that tells you how quickly things happen. And every single time, we always promote that to our customers that, you know, after the end of the lifecycle, we will continue for five years of support, and that's always generally worked out. Now, when you're, did I answer, are you good with that? On the hardware, reading software, on the reading side of it?
Uh, no, I don't feel like you gave me a direct answer on how long this thing's really good for.
Okay, well, because it's really dependent, it really is. If you have a handheld that's dead, that's the end of its life cycles, and we can't do anything with it, it's that amount of time. It really is. It could, we've had handhelds that have lasted ten years, twelve years, seven years. It truly is dependent on the thing. But if the council, and we've done this before, the council needs to get a letter from us or from Neptune to say, hey, look, we're purchasing this piece of hardware. We would like it, or we would like to have usage of it or to be able to be serviced for a certain amount of time. We can put that in there. So, and I'm trying to think, who's the last one that we did that for? Loray, Virginia. Because they were with another company and the company came in and said, hey, look, these things are gone. You have to get a new one next year. Without giving them any kind of thing like that. So when we came into our presentation, they said, well, we would like this, you know, added to, if we purchased from you, and we were able to do that. So, and I'm sorry I can't answer that directly. It's so much easier to answer this part directly. But with the heart, there's so many things up in the air that happen with that. There really is. There's so many variables that could change.
Well, I understand that technology's going in leaps and bounds and everything changes. But with that, right there, you're still not totally out of business with that because of the fact that you have the capability of looking in and reading it.
Correct. And you guys now have the capability with your, that little belt, that belt clip transceiver? That's what the, there's something that's called bring your own reading device to work, meaning at some point Neptune and virtually everyone else are going to get rid of the handhelds. And it's only going to be a receiver that you have. And you'll have to be able to access it through a tablet, a laptop, a smartphone. And that's probably two to three years, not even two, three years. It's probably within a year or two of being to fruition around here. So the big thing that you guys have, or the advantage you guys have right now is you've already got the belt that transceiver. And that's, from all indications, that's going to be the future as we move forward. Now, there may be some, you know, small alterations to that, but that's what they're doing, is looking for a receiver. And that's what most, if not all, the meter manufacturers are doing.
And what about, you know, we're well and on hardware here. What about the software that comes along with a newer system?
Your software will work perfectly with any system you get from us.
It don't work perfectly now.
That being said, it helped, or excuse me. It will accompany, or will accept any system that you guys have. Now, that also being said, you know, we would like to find out if there's a way, if you guys would put together like a list of what your concerns are or what issues you are having, and maybe we've dropped the ball and haven't addressed at this point. So that's on us. So we would like that, if that's an available option for you guys to put down what your issues are. And we can, you know, either check them off or find out what, you know, what could be a good solution or whatever.
Well, I think Mark's in touch with a lot of the things that we do need around here. And he would probably be a good advisor for us. But, you know, all of us here, Ernie's about the only one that's out there pounding the streets every day.
Right.
I'm kind of a part-timer when it comes to meter readings and this and that. But Ernie's got some experience on it that, you know, is real valuable. And Mark's gave us a lot of guidance in the.
Harry's been here an awful lot. Harry's been here an awful lot as well.
Yes, I have guessed it.
And he's your go-to guy for all the technical things. And I think one thing that Charles might have, you might not have understood, that every system you purchase will have a maintenance cost involved. And there are maintenance agreements that have a cost. And depending on who you're dealing with, those maintenance agreements can be eight hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars. And what that is, is just, in essence, an insurance policy on your equipment. So if something goes wrong, they replace it or repair it.
Yeah, it's similar to what Ernie was asking about earlier, about the meters up at the, what you do.
Water plant.
Yes, that place.
Right. Some of the other things I think we ought to touch on other than hardware and software. And as Charles said, this is a definite. Pretty much everybody in the industry that's selling an automatic meter reading or an AMI system that's, you know, transmitted to your office has a twenty-year warranty, ten years full warranty, ten years prorated.
Okay, that was the question I asked.
Yes.
So not on hardware, only on meter and radio?
Yeah.
What's the difference between this meter and the ones we have right now?
The radio right here is not attached to it?
Well, the same problem that we have with the ones right here is the same problem we're going to have with the ones we have now. And it's the bottom that's busted. Yeah, but that bottom is a cycle.
I know that's still, that's time's gotta go.
Can I address that?
Yeah.
Nobody in the industry has a bottom that won't, they're designed to break in a free situation.
Right.
And that protects the inside. Now, one thing that we do do is I try to deal with everybody and get chambers. And I have chambers that I'm going to give you all, free of charge. But my national meter guy dropped them off in Pershingville, Virginia. I haven't had a chance to get to Pershingville, Virginia to pick them up. But I have given many to many of your neighbors in Mineral County after this winter. But we had a week of single-digit temperatures this year. So it was an unprecedented year for meter problems. We just left another neighbor who has an alternative product from another company, and they had all the same problems with their bottoms, so that was a problem. Now, these new meters, if you see, they have a thicker plastic bottom than the old ones.
Yeah, I was seeing that.
And, you know, that system went in in ninety-eight, if I'm not mistaken. Because I was here.
Before I was here.
And I was instrumental in installing some of it. So, and it's been a good system. And until this year, and we had a new meter reader, a new lady in the office. And anytime you're dealing with something new, there's going to be bumps in the road and things that people don't understand completely. And that's why Harry's been here probably twelve times. And I was unaware there was a problem. Or I've been here addressing the things in the field.
Harry's been a lot of help to the Jerry Field.
One thing I'll say, and I hope you don't mind me interjecting, is that whoever's meter you purchase, what's most important to you as a town is that you have support. And that support can be to you in twenty-four hours. So, and that's not always the case. And there are certain.
Don't take nothing away from your support, Mark.
I got you, I got you, bro.
Oh, yeah, you're there, brother. I got you now.
That's cool.
We were trying to save as much money as we can for this town.
I understand.
And try to get as much as. And try to get as much as we can to keep this town going.
Yes, sir.
When we go out to fix a meter, it only takes fifteen, twenty minutes, but usually we have to do a two-hour call. We're losing money.
Yes, sir.
We can't afford it, and that's where we're at, that's, you know, that's why we'd like to have a system that, we're gonna be able to, nobody's gonna be able to tamper with, nobody's gonna be able to bother it, they're not gonna be able to take the lock off of it and turn it around and do whatever they want without us knowing it. That's what we want.
Smart meters are for.
We are tired of people robbing this town blind.
Yes, sir.
And they've been doing it for, well, we'll leave that one alone.
That's all right, well, I mean, that brings up a good point.
That is what we are looking for as a town, we're trying to find something that's gonna keep our money here.
Gotcha. And, and the fact is that these are cash registers, no matter whose you have. So, accuracy and support is imperative to everybody. And, uh, you know, I didn't mean to sound aggressive, but I believe in our product, and I, um, Charles is all over this state, Virginia, Maryland, um, because we, um, we cover all those states for these meters, and we're what's referred to as a level-one distributor. So, um, we have a devoted seven-member meter team, which I'm not part of. I'm, I'm boots-on-the-ground guy, I, I sell everything under the sun. These guys just do meters, and they're, and they're really good at it. But if you have a problem, um, and I was not aware that you had any problems, so I'm the guy, um, other than Harry, that you can call at any time, and I'll be here. I'm only, I only live, you know, an hour and a half away. I mean, I'll jump in the truck, and I do that for anybody, if you have a leak in the middle of the night, I bring supplies to repair a leak, whatever it is. And I've been doing that for twenty-one years.
I got you a speed down.
Well, thank you. Now, I'll shut up at that, but there's, 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 when you look at multiple products, there's so much information that, that's there, not taking anything away from anybody, but from a layperson's standpoint, when you look at multiple systems, whether it be two, three, or four, there's so much information that you take in, that it's hard to decipher who told you what.
Especially from where you guys stand, I mean, you're.
Well, I think we've heard about, just about all we could hear, can't we, maybe we've been, over the last few years? Well, I, I thi- I think that, uh, uh, everything that we've had in the past, uh, the reliability was pretty good on these meters. They were, uh, you know, they're still in existence.
Yes, sir, after twenty years.
And, uh, it's time to do something with them, but, uh, we're kind of at the mercy of finances, too.
Right.
And, uh, I think you hit the nail kind of on the head there, when there was a, uh, there was a turnover here in the office about people sending out the bills and not quite understanding it, and Harry's been there to hold, hold your hand and help us out, and I appreciate that.
And that, and that's one of the things that we try to promote big time on our side is, uh, a lot of times we're not the chiefest that comes out there, but we don't nickel and dime you after the fact. Um, you know, if, whether it be, and my best one is always in, um, Kent County, Maryland, we have trained six different, uh, people to do the meter, I mean, to do the billing, to handle the software, do that, and not to charge any time. And a lot of times what you'll get is people charged for your, the, the hotel, the, the travel and stuff like that, we don't do that. That's just, you know, you guys have our systems up to us to make sure you guys are, uh, reaping the benefits from it. But just to leave a fact, or to leave something for you, that's a safety feature, the breaking part here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and we had talked with Neptune and discussed, is there any way that they could help this? You know, we understand what it's designed for, but, you know, we, in our climate, we're, we're in the worst area of the country for things. Up, up north, they got them inside, down south, it's too hot, and they got them buried six inches. Here, you could be anywhere from two feet down to four feet down to bury a, a, a meter so it doesn't freeze. So, they did, that, part of this was a little extra special design for us, so. Um, and then the last thing I'm gonna say on this, cause it's very important for you guys, for, you know, to protect your investment and to protect the money that you put into the system to put the, the water out there for people, they shouldn't be stealing it, they shouldn't be getting, you know, paying for seventy-five percent of the water, when, you know, you're delivering a hundred percent of it. And one of the things on this is, um, you know, like I said earlier, like all meter manufacturers are to the point of having smart meters, where you get the leak detection, blah, blah, all that stuff. Okay, the big difference between ours and everyone else is, is they, they pull theirs off of algorithms, which means they do that off the readings. Like if I, Mr. Mayor, at your house, if you have a reading of, you know, four hundred, and then it goes to read it again, and you have a reading of, you know, four thousand, so they're gonna like, oh, you know, he's got, uh, over, you know, overuse there, there's something that's going on. Well, they're only doing that by the reading. What we do when we get an overuse situation, or a leak detection, is we go in, and, and this meter will tell you why it's there. Meaning that if you've got continuous use of your house for twenty-four hours, I mean, and nobody uses water at their house twenty-four hours, so, or in a twenty-four-hour commitment, that's when it tells you there's a leak. Not because you used a lot of water, you had, you know, filled up your swimming pool, or you got family in for the weekend, or something like that. It's not, it doesn't go on what your readings are, it goes on what's going through here, okay? And also, when you turn this thing around, that backflow, uh, detection that comes on here, tells you that somebody's stealing your water. Okay, it gives you that, tells you when it happened. All the data log part in here tells you the date, timestamp, all that stuff's available to you on this stuff, so. And it's all at the meter level, not at the reading level. Cause at the reading level, someone could do this, you know, one hour, have it right, and flip it over, fill the, you know, something, and then flip it back, and then all of a sudden the reading comes in, and, you know, instead of, you know, negative four hundred gallons, they had the positive four hundred and five before, so it only showed them positive five gallons. So, to them, there's no issue there, there's no backflow occurrence, okay? Here, you can find that, it's going to register that. That was just my part, and I've kept you guys way too long as it is. Is there anything else that I could help you out, or, I mean, what I'm gonna take away from here is, one, that hopefully you got this information out, and two, that we get a list, if there are some concerns, that we can get those addressed.
We'll, we'll, I'll get with everyone, and we'll, uh, we'll get you guys.
And I'll, I'll come back at any time.
Oh, I know that, Mark.
And, and just go over it in more detail, as I understand it. Again, I'm not meter division, sometimes I, I, I don't, uh, convey it as eloquently as, as Charles does, but, um, I do know how they work, and I do know what the competition is, and I do know the ups and downs of probably five different meters on the market, cause I've been exposed to all of them. And what Charles was saying about support and things working, I mean, I have customers that are still using, um, for individual reads on master meters, equipment that we sold them twenty-five years ago. And Neptune has always prided themselves on the, being forward my grateful. And if Charles said that already, I don't mean to be redundant, but, um, if you bought a meter in nineteen sixty-two, and you wanna read it today, and it had a fourteen pin, uh, on the wall that you plugged into, you can still get that, which is crazy, you know, but, um, because you can get it because I still have some.
And you can upgrade your meters that you have out there right now. Right now, you can just take this rest of your head off and put it on the new one.
So, that's all we'd have to do, is just get the heads up, man?
Right. Plus your twenty-year-old meters. What I would do, if I'm in your shoes, I would spot-check probably six or seven different spots here, pull one meter from six or seven different spots, take it in, let it get tested. If it's reading what you're comfortable with, ninety-five, ninety-eight percent, then I'll just switch it.
We're not under that window, because eighteen years ago, we made.
Oh, let it.
Eighteen years ago, we made these meters lead-free, we were the first one in the industry to make a lead-free meter. So, uh, yours went in prior to that, so yours are leaded meters.
So, anything over two thousand, year two thousand?
And to be NSF sixty-one compliant, you have to do a total change out, and there's not a big, it's not that big of a cost. This is the cost right here, the bottom is negligible. All, all your solid-state circuitries in the top, and your radio transmitter, that's the big cost. So, this is, you know, I mean, to buy a bottom, I mean, it's, might be twenty-five dollars. But if you do the whole change out, and if you go with someone else, you're probably gonna end up doing the same thing. Now, what, what you need to decide is you want something like this, and you're gonna have good support, it's a brass meter, it's lead-free, or the plastic ones, or other ones that are on the market. And, um, I'd like to talk to you all again, if, and like Charles said, we've taken enough of your time. I'd love to answer all of your questions, and I can do that at any time. Like I said, I'm only an hour and a half away, Charles is five hours away.
No, I am not, I'm in Richmond.
How, how far, Larry?
Uh, three hours and forty minutes.
Is that, it'll take you longer than that to get to Richmond, cause I stop a lot.
It's each.
So, I'll shut up at this point, and, um, I'd be more than happy to come back one other evening and slow it down a bit.
And thank you, guys, I mean, is there any immediate questions that?
Well, all of our, uh, all of our issues is gonna be dictated by what we do with Phase Three, the water project.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's gonna what moves us, moves us forward.
Is Phase Three, uh, is that, um, funded by USDA, or?
Well, that's where we're at, Mark, we're not, we, we've got options with USDA or the IJDC. The USDA, uh, as far as, uh, annual percentage rate, it's like four percent, four-point-five percent. We're, we're IJDC's one percent.
Right.
And, uh, it's gonna have to be a, it's gonna have to be a fifty-fifty.
A combined funding.
A, a grant versus, and, you know, we haven't really made the decision on how to attack that.
Okay.
So, there's, something has to be done with our raw water line. You know, it's, uh, nearly ninety years old, and that's the only reason why we really have to go a Phase Three water project. You know, I'm talking half-two Ks.
Yes.
And, uh, we got deteriorating lines clear, you know, seven miles of them. So, you know, that's, uh, that's the first thing on the agenda.
I got you.
Then, we're gonna be, if we tap onto another water supply, one way or the other, and we have a master meter somewhere, we're gonna have to assure that we have leak detection.
Correct.
So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things that's in the fire, but nothing has really stumped it up in much yet, so.
Gotcha.
Everything's in a working phase. Well, it, it's not that, it's not that we, we can't do it, it's just the idea that we wanna bite the bullet and do it. To my opinion, it's gonna come down to the fact that we have to do it. Right now, the deteriorated line from up there down, and then the, the old raw water line runs right, directly through the paper mill. You know, what?
Yeah, darn it if you do, and darn it if you don't.
That's right. That's where we're at. I thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Before, I got two things to tell you guys real quick.
Okay.
Um, one is, is right now, when you read meters, you're getting just the reading. When you get a reading from this R nine hundred I, you're getting the reading, plus you're getting information like days of no flow, backflow, uh, leaks, and that kind of thing. So, when you unload the readings into the insight system, you'll get, you'll get a report. And if, say, you think somebody's stealing water, or you think, uh, there's, uh, they're flipping the meter around, or something's going on, you can go back out to their house, pull the data log, which is ninety-six days of hourly reads. So, you can tell down to the hour what's going on, that kind of thing. The advantage of this system is, you can read it with your current reading system. Your handheld will read this meter today. If, say, down the road, you decide to upgrade to one of our drive-by systems, things stay the same in the pit. If you wanna upgrade to a fixed-base system, you can do that, too. This stays in, in the ground, there's no, there's no need to upgrade what's in your pits, just because you wanna change reading systems. Now, item number two, is I'm gonna show you an alternative, I'm gonna discuss an alternative way of using this system. Um, we, uh, we've got a couple of customers who are small like you, they don't have the funds for an AMI system, so they have this system. They read for billing once a month, but they read their meters once a week. And they use the, they actually have the drive-by system, takes them about an hour, and they pretty much get all the data through a drive-by, with the drive-by system, as opposed to a full fixed-base system. So, that, that's just a little workaround that you guys may wanna consider.
Well, as, as it goes closer to reality, is when we're gonna start concentrating more on whether it's the drive-by or the fixed base.
Sure.
Probably gonna be one of those, not, not the one going around to every meter.
Yeah, your pass-up one, it's just too easy for you to, to make that mix up.
Right. And I, I, you know, I really don't feel that we have so much water stolen in the town. I think it's, uh, leaks and things from the deteriorating system. It's, uh, you know, as much, the water that we run through the plant is pretty much all accounted for. So, you know, we have to do an accountability report on that monthly, so it's not really that bad. I mean, you sure have some loss, no matter what.
Especially twenty-year-old meters.
Yeah. So, you know, uh, I'm not, I'm not, uh, real super concerned about, about that part of it, but, you know, we do need some, we need to, do need to date the system. But I don't wanna do that without trying to raise everybody's water bill, too.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's a lot of time of funding, that's what happens.
Well, I think we might be able to work it out, this fifty-fifty deal.
That might be the way to go.
Well, uh, you know, it's still not on the final chapter yet, but, uh, you know, we're looking at, uh, a lot of different conclusions to this thing, and one of them is the fifty-fifty proposition. And, you know, we just, uh, have to, we just had to, have to do a feasibility study on how we can do this raw water line, and that feasibility study has not reached us yet.
Also, if you ever have to remind people, the only one thing that matters life and death to you as a homeowner living in your house, is the supply of water.
Absolutely.
And yet, they, anyone will complain about any, I mean, it's basically given away at this point, it's still, I mean, if you consider the importance that it is in your life, that what you pay for it, compared to gas, electric, you know, whatever, those are nothing compared to them that you have to live by. So, that's one of the things I always try to remind people.
That is an absolute fact, you know, the, the thing of it is, you know, we have a lot of elderly people here, and we have a lot of people that's on fixed incomes and, and lower income.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, before you give them the gallons, you gotta try to make sure that you cover every avenue that ain't gonna cost them anything.
Right.
And that's what I've been doing, you know, and government moves at a snail's pace.
That's right.
And that's, you know, it, it's slow. Hopefully, it'll get here, but soon, or, it'll get here, but it's gonna, whether it's sooner or later.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for all of your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, pleasure meeting you. If you guys have any questions or anything, Mark, or Harry, or I, or just whatever.
Well, thank you for everything, you have a very good time.
Thank you very much again.
Yeah.
Person you had, then again, anytime, more than half, come back anytime, okay?
Thank you.
Slow it down a bit when you have time to.
All right, thanks again, y'all have a good one.
All right.
You, too.
My kids are cops.
Uh, Boy Scouts of America, uh, we have a couple of, uh, guys that, uh, I ran onto at Fort Ashby, uh, what's his name?
Brent Smart.
Brent Smart is the leader of the Boy Scouts around here, and, uh, he was, uh, wanting to know if I'd bring this up in a meeting to try to promote someone around Piedmont as a scout leader, or something like that. If anyone has any one in mind, I know, uh, Paul Coleman used to do this a while back, and, uh, he kinda got out of it, but I don't know if he'd be interested in it again or not. But, uh, you know, in your chores around town, if anyone's interested in it, let me know, or, or I'll give you Brent's number. Okay. All right, the next thing is the employee matters, uh, possible executive session. So. Oh, please, anyone, please?